I'll actually be the new director, he can have a resource. I'm replacing Brock when the transition's up the report, so yeah. I'll get to, yeah, I'll get in here for some of his cornice mess he created for me. Yeah, it's, 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 I agree, it's such a delicate matter. And you guys, a lot of your people have spoken to us, like, you know, just kind of the physical side of it. It's, 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 it's a reality, and you can't, you can't, you can't ignore it, and I appreciate the fact that you guys didn't, which was, which was wrong, so. Hopefully there's... Right. I got you. Understood, understood, understood. No, no, yeah, totally, totally, totally see what you're saying, I really do. We're all right. Just a little bit of walkout, but, yeah, so, but yeah, the area, I can't even tell how many rounds I've done, I've turned it out, but, um, just something personal, I want to see it go, I want to see it stay, I want to see it stay golf, selfishly, because I was, one of my favorite courses around here. The one, I forget who, someone mentioned that about playing, he started playing Hurskin, and then he went to elbow, it was a disaster. As a golfer, as a golfer, you know, if you're a golfer, it's a disaster. Elbow's fun, a little black bar, and everybody, we're often on places like this. You do, you try to forget your, your, you know, you're not, you don't have the hustle and bustle of, 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 for a few hours, you get to just relax, and it's, you don't, we don't, I mean, in our, our head-to-head style, you know, you don't, you don't get that opportunity. It's nice to take a break, so, it's fine.
What is it making?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe the commission or committee, I don't know, the company decides they want to call it. Hopefully that, hopefully that can address the needs, uh, and we'll see what they, I guess, we're meeting again in February 1st or something, which is next week, right? Okay, next Monday, so I think that's, I assume that'll just be, um, I don't know, that'll be just like this, I guess, I mean, I don't, I hope you see the issue before, I mean, I don't really need another meeting, just for everybody to, you know, rehash everything we did tonight, waste everybody's time, I hope there's, uh, I am, this is, you know, but, it's not gonna help any of us, uh, you know, everybody's time is valuable, to just show up and just rehash everything, it's just like, it's important, it's not gonna advance the cost of anybody, so, hopefully we move forward. Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, I think it's unfortunate that, maybe, maybe in that aspect, maybe a, a large amount of meeting will be better, uh, because you won't, you don't have the time for things, and you're, they're wrapping into the window, I mean, I get that, they have lots of time, so, I mean, I get that, uh, sure, 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 yeah, as you're trying to, even, you hit your three, then you're trying to, okay. Really? Yeah, and that, that's, yeah, that's a little bit tricky, so, hopefully, in that aspect, yeah, like, maybe next meeting, well, actually, I don't know, I don't know, I just, I'm just worried, I, I'm new to the process, but, you, you get the stigma, public input, and you just, that's fine, I just don't see it, I want the issue to go forward, not the issue that the administration's presenting, just the issue that everybody sees, I hope that is what's going, that, and, how, for what I can contribute to it, I will, so, we'll see, I don't know what we're gonna be, but, you guys all staying around for tonight? Yes. Cribbling, cribbling, no work tonight, first of all. No, for that. Oh, yeah, so, and unfortunately, cribbling, cribbling, it's the same deal, you get, but it puts it on another public stage, you know, so, take advantage of the voice you're allowed, so, you know, I mean, hey, what's your garden? Right, but, you know, which, I think, that's, that's how, that's how progress is made, unfortunately, whether that's good or bad, that's, that's how it's made, so, everybody has to be respected in the process. It may not be the way we want to see it, or the way you even want to do it, you know, no, you don't want to have to go screaming to high heavens, but, that's what you need to do, that's what you need to do, so, can appreciate that. Uh, I've, I've been a, a year, a little over a year and a half, working, kind of, working with Brock, so, transition, sorry, I'm just being next week over two, it's a special one, though. Well, they like her, but, you know, it's fine, so, yeah, I'm sure I'll see you Monday.
On behind. On behind. All the stuff I need to be doing.
It's just fire.
Yeah.
Not too much money. It's a long way, yeah. Here we need to be. Oh, I do, it's tough.
So, what's up, Colin? You good?
Yeah, so, yeah, I only finished it on the big ten.
Yeah, we bad, we bad. They gotta go to the county tomorrow night, so we'll see. Let's all get pretty good, Jack. We'll see what happens up there. But...
Been playing so far?
They showed, they showed Mike Bray that the most consistent team in the state is that, so.
I know, Devin.
How many dates were you on suicide calls following, Ohio State, was Ohio's Alabama? No, I'm talking about that. No, that was, I was talking about football.
Football, we good. Ooh, we got one more.
It's almost time.
Yeah, we on board it. Let me listen. Joe.
Yeah, I'm right side of him.
I think that's good. Let's go, let's go right there.
Actually, that, that was not an unusually unproductive, I mean, it was a productive meeting, uh, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's, uh, you should present the people, uh, to take their energy, uh, it's, uh, you guys, you know, see each other's, uh, 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 uh.
Joe. Joe Brody. Sean Gordy. Joe. Brock G. Do you guys have a date? Did you guys confirm? Can hook? All right, okay. All rise, uh, Monday, January 25th, 2016, Council, Common Council Meeting is now in session, our invocation is by Bishop Donald L. Alfred. Bishop Alfred, thank you, sir.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of life, health, family, and provisions. We read in Psalms 127, "Except the Lord build the house, they labor in vain, they build it; except the Lord keep the city, the watchmen wake it in vain." Knowing that you are the ultimate keeper of the city, we invoke your divine presence in these chambers, where many decisions are made regarding our grand city of South Bend, we petition you for the safekeeping of those who serve the common council. We also pray for the mayor of our city, we ask that you give these wisdom and correct his directions, as they lead the city safely onward. We know and believe that these requests will be granted, in this matchless name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the living, the free, and the just.
Ms. Hawley, please read the roll.
President Scott.
Present.
Councilmember President.
Present.
Randy Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Brody.
Present.
Dr. Martin.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Mr. Gordy.
Present.
Mr. Furlett.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you, report on subcommittee amendments, please.
Report of the subcommittee on minutes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 11th, 2016, meeting of the committee to a final review, therefore we recommend the same being approved.
I would like to make a motion to receive a report from the subcommittee on minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, before we do Resolution 1605, I'd like to ask James Mueller, um, from administration, do you, have you confirmed the date with the, uh, meeting on Elbow for February 1st, 5:30 at Bin Hall? Okay, thank you all, and we will have more public notice on that as well. For anybody in the audience, I just want to make sure that was, uh, mentioned and clear. Thank you, uh, we'll move on to special business with Bill, 1605, Ms. Hawley.
Bill 1605, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly honoring and thanking Phil L. St. Clair, park superintendent and the former executive director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and honoring him for his 34 years of dedicated public service to the citizens of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Presenter.
Could we have, um, Chief St. Clair's family come forth? Good evening. I'd like to read over here on this side. Um, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly honoring and thanking Philip St. Clair, park superintendent and the former executive director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and honoring him for his 34 years of dedicated public service to the citizens of South Bend, Indiana. Whereas the South Bend Common Council recognizes that Philip L. St. Clair began working for the city of South Bend in 1982, and in the, in 1993, South Bend Mayor Joseph E. Kern appointed disabled body Marine to be the park superintendent to oversee the operation management and ongoing development of parks, with this position being expanded in 1995 to also oversee all parks, recreation programs, services, and activities. Whereas, some of the many products and hot button issues Phil has creatively tackled and effectively addressed include the renovation of Ella Morris Conservatory, to make it into an energy-efficient, welcoming venue, maintaining the city's 14 community parks, 26 neighborhood parks, maintaining seven block parks, maintaining 13 special parks, and working to have the Department of Parks and Recreation become accredited for the first time since September 25, 2007, and becoming one of just four departments in the state of Indiana to be accredited by the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies, CARP, and now is among 142 accredited agencies in the United States which recognizes for excellence in operations and service, while providing assurance to the public that the agency meets national standards for best practices, representing the top 1% of all parks and recreation agencies achieving this recognition. Whereas, under Phil's leadership, dedicated support staff and employees, the Department of Parks and Recreation was selected as the outstanding agency by the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association in 2012, and whereas in 2014, Phil helped work with residents to together some strategic thoughts, ideas, and plans to build a road match which became the five-year Park Master Plan, 2014 to 2018. It focuses on we build community through people, parks, and programs, and it continues to help meet the needs of current future residents by positioning South Bend to build upon the city's unique park and recreation assets and identify new opportunities through this citizen-driven plan which established a clear direction to guide city, staff, and advisory committees, and elected officials, in their efforts to enhance the community's parks and recreation programs, services, and facilities, which attract over 1 million visitors a year. And whereas, Phil establishes the South Bend Parks Foundation in December of 2010, for the purpose of providing resources to build community through people, parks, and programs in support of Phil's vision that the South Bend Parks and Recreation have a long-term legacy of such programs which would forever maintain, remain, and equal part of our community. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1. On behalf of all the residents of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council is proud to publicly honor and sincerely thank Phil St. Clair for leading the Department of Parks and Recreation to the 21st century, with their vision, dedication, determination, and countless hours of hard work in order to see that the recreation needs and priorities throughout the many outstanding park venues located throughout South Bend were not only met, but exceeded. Section 2. The Council wishes Phil and his wife Deb a long, wonderful retirement filled with unforgettable enjoyment. Look forward to seeing you walking along the eastways and enjoying sights and sounds along the St. Joseph River, and after many other outstanding park venues which Phil helped develop and maintain in the city of South Bend. Section 3. This resolution shall be in full force and effect prominence after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor. Mr. President, I've had the honor of working with, um, Phil St. Clair over these last, um, going toward nine years on this council, and especially when we came down to work at Timber City Cemetery, since the park is our first, park is our city cemetery, it's been an honor working with him. I was stunned by his retirement, and, um, saddened by his retirement, says when a tree falls, the forest weeps, and I believe so many of us took time to pause, because he has been a talent, not only in terms of how he's reached out to people, but his ideas and visionary for others. One of the projects that I would love to see come together, that has not come together yet, is his vision for Miracle Park. Uh, we talked about that years ago, and that was his passion, his heart, and hopefully as we go forth in this new council and the new administration, the seeds of his vision can finally have fruit in that area. The park that's been named after him is also housed in the 6th District, and is honored to have, um, that park in the 6th District that has his name on it, that's not too far from where I live, so it's honored to have, on behalf of the members of the 6th District, his park in our district. This time, we would like to hear, um, from the council.
Thank you, Vice President Oliver Davis. Um, yeah, this time we'd like to comment from council members, starting with Ms. White.
Thank you, President Scott, I'd like to publicly pay tribute for all of your years of service, uh, to the parks and to the citizens, and especially to the city of South Bend. Your passion and commitment to our parks goes without being challenged. Uh, since I've been on this council over 20 years, I've had the pleasure of working with you, uh, we've worked through some really tough issues, a lot of the programs that move beyond the parks are in place because of your commitment to the city. You'll be missed, I would like to thank your family for sharing you, because the parks is not a eight-to-five job, it's 24/7, and when we have challenges, uh, within the city, or when we have natural disasters, the parks is very much part of that, so again, thank you, I wish you the very best, and I know that you're gonna be very busy, but thank you so much.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much, Phil. Um, some of the best memories and some of the best moments of my life have been in South Bend Parks, and as somebody who's 34 years old, you were in charge of overseeing every single one of them, so, uh, thank you for what you do for the city.
Mr. Gordy.
Yeah, job well done, Phil. I think we all ought to be appreciative and grateful for all the dedication you've shown to this job and to the people of South Bend. You've been honored innumerable times, I think, by your peers around the state, and I thank you for all of that. So good luck in retirement. Maybe we'll see you at Elbel Golf Course.
Dr. Boarder.
Phil, I was, I believe I was sitting here the night that you were named Parks Director or Park Director of Parks, which goes back about 20 or so odd years. Kathy was here, Deb was here also, and probably not that many other folks. Phil has always been one of the most approachable, congenial, personable people in the city that I've ever dealt with. And he's one of the directors. I've never heard any of his staff complain about him. He's always had good things to say about him. Phil's obviously a people person. He interacts well with people. He does his job. I want to thank you for the help you've given me at times that we need to do things in the 5th District or places like that. And I certainly wish you the best in the future, because I think with the ambition and the interest that you have still in doing things, you'll be around helping out somewhere. And if it's here, good for us. Thanks, Phil.
Phil, I don't really know where to begin, because there's so much to say. I think two words come to mind. Servant, doing your job well, knowing your job. And I also think of stewardship. And before I was a gym rat, I was a park rat, one of nine, one of 10 kids in the city of South Bend, and a mother looking for a place to send her kids during the day. The parks provided that for me in my youth. I can't say overlapped my, like fellow council member Furlic. However, we as a city entrusted you with a legacy, and you have done an extraordinary job. The parks in our community have served the Broden family well, and I would be remiss to not add my husband's compliments and thanks to you for a job well done. I think he cut his teeth working as an attorney for the Parks Board, later on as city councilman. And our children have benefited tremendously, as well as our neighbors, and I thank you. And also, I would like to just shout out to your family. Really, thanks for sharing him. Parks is not a job that you leave somewhere and go home, and it's not on your desk or not on your mind. And I thank you for, Phil, holding our community and its youth, and really, everyone, and keeping in mind the importance of recreation in our lives. So thank you so much. And best of wishes to you and your retirement.
Phil St. Clair, I didn't have the privilege of getting to spend too much time working with you, but I know how highly my father thought of you. And I would just like to say congratulations. Thank you so much, and echo everyone's comments here today. Best of luck with your next steps.
Wow. Ditto. And just a personal thank you so much for your work. I appreciate it. All right. Luck in retirement.
And Phil, yeah, ditto the same. I appreciate all the comments and all the frank conversations that you and I've had in the last four years, and love the fact your passion with softball. That was very impressive to see that last year. Thank you for inviting me out to that. Just incredible. So thank you for all the years, and the best of luck to you and the family. So at this time, we'll open up to the public. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of 1605? Please come to the podium. You can go ahead and line up. Name an address, please.
I was getting to that.
I can't hear you.
I am Rosello. I live at 1247 East LaSalle in South Bend. And I have such a great respect for Phil St. Clair. My last eight years on the council, I think all of it, or most of it, I was Chair of the Park Committee. So I went to the Park Board meetings, and I had a lot of communication with the people who worked for the parks. And at meetings, I was just so impressed with the amount of respect Phil had, people had for Phil, the people who worked for him, and the people on the Park Board. And he was one of those directors whom the Park Board asked his opinion, and he just, he was in charge, and he had a lot of good people working for him, and was a very impressive park director. I'm sorry to see him go. I mean, I was always impressed with the condition of the parks. If there were problems, as there were at the zoo, the conservatory, those of us in the northeast neighborhood are now working with Kelly Park. But he, things were taken care of. They were clean, and they were good. And my brother, who is a golfer, I am not, really likes to play at Elbel. So, you know, and he's pretty picky. So anyway, Phil worked hard on trying to make Miracle Park a reality, and I hope that that happens as time goes on, because it would be a wonderful park that few cities have for the city of South Bend and the children and people of South Bend. And I wish Phil and his family well, and you will be missed very much.
Thank you. Next.
My name's Aaron Perry. I'm the new Executive Director of Parks and Recreation. And in this new job, I've only been here two weeks, but as soon as people find out I'm with the Parks Department, the number one thing they say is, "They've got an idea for the parks." And then the number two thing they say is, "I've got big shoes to fill." And it's absolutely true. I was doing some math the other day, and I was looking through the average tenure of our Parks Department employees. 19 years, that's the current average tenure. And that doesn't happen without a strong leader at the helm. And so I can tell you, Phil has left me with a great staff, a really talented crew, and a lot of groundwork to build upon. So, Phil, thanks for your service, and I look forward to building on what you've built.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'd especially like, I'm 28, New York, Indiana. Also a resident of Kelly Park, Oquillard Park, Howard Park, et cetera. But anyway, all in the fourth. I'd certainly like to thank Phil for his service to the city all these years, but especially for his personal advice and friendship. He's given me on a private Public Park Initiative. You know, Karen White always talks about quality of life issues, and for you new council members, you'll find out that that ranks among the top three projects that you have as priorities. And 1978, I had my choice to go many places in this country to live as an orthopedic surgeon, and I chose South Bend, Indiana. And I haven't looked back on it for one moment, and it's because of people like Phil St. Clair that made my quality of life so much better than any other place I can imagine. So, Phil, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more. Is there anyone wishing to speak against 1605? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Were we adopted by acclamation?
Yes, we can. Sorry, moving too quick.
Well, thanks for all the great comments. I don't have a prepared speech or talk, but I do want to take a moment to thank my family, my wife Debbie, and my son David, and his wife Molly, and my other son Jeremy, and his wife Casey. This has been, it's been more than a job for me. It's been a way of life. It seems like forever. I've woken up out of bed in the morning with a mission to serve this community in the Parks and Recreation, and to offer the best services that I could and that our department could for the benefit of the community. And times would have flown by. It didn't seem that long ago. I remember standing up here in 1982, and was requesting some funds from the council regarding some fleet replacements that we needed to do back in 1982 in the street department. And I'm sure that John and Kathy can remember Beverly Beck, who was my kindergarten teacher, marking the school. And before I got to work on my mouth, she told the entire chamber here what my first day of school was like. That was my first shot at public speaking. Needless to say, I was a bit gun-shy for a while afterwards, but nonetheless, it's, over the years, it's been great working with all of you and with prior council members. I've had the opportunity to work directly with Mayor Kernan, Mayor Linky, and Mayor Brugge. Also had the opportunity to work with Mayor Perrin as well when I first started with the city. It's been, it's just going by so quickly. It really has. And I've enjoyed most of it, and I hope that, you know, we've left behind a better park system with a better mindset, not just facilities, but a better mindset and a better passion than what it was 23 years ago. When Joe asked me to come over to Parks, he said, "What was the number one goal that you had for Parks and Rec?" And I said, "My number one goal, Joe, is for everybody that works for Parks and Recreation and would feel proud to work for Parks and Recreation. We'll build a strong team, and everybody will take pride in the fact that they work for this department." And I hope that we were successful in the last 23 years of doing that. So again, my sincere thanks. Thanks to my family, to my staff, to all the employees in Parks and Rec, and all that has teamed up with Parks and Rec over the years to help us out, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. This time, do you intend to motion?
Motion about that, Mr. Public.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Good luck, Phil. Thanks, Phil. Okay, thank you. This time, we will not have reports from city offices. The message is represented by Chief Staff James Mueller. At this time, I entertain a motion to resolve into the video.
The committee of the whole is now in session. The committee of the whole portion of the council meeting is where the common council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public hearing on the bill. During the public portion on each bill, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes. Everyone in the chambers is requested to turn off any electronic devices. And I will now ask the city clerk to read the title of bill number...
7215.
7215.
7215. Public hearing on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and requesting special exception for a property located at 3055 Edison Road, Councilman at District 4, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Zoning Authorization Committee met this afternoon, and we bring Bill 7215 to this council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes, my name is Matthew Chapias of the Area Plan Commission, with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. This is the petition of Snorer Properties LLC, or the new zone from LV Local Business District to OB Office Buffer District, and they're also looking for a special exception to allow personal services, which would be things such as a hair salon or a beauty salon. The property is located just west of the Hickory and Edison intersection, near Bame Park. On site now is an existing single-family home which has been equipped as a salon and has functioned as a salon for the past five or so years. To the north are the soccer fields of Bame Park, Zoned SF1, single-family and two-family district. To the east is an open field of Bame Park, also Zoned SF1. To the south, across Edison Road, are single-family homes, Zoned SF1, and a church, Zoned MF2, urban corridor multifamily district. To the west is a single-family home, Zoned SF1. This is an image of the existing site. We're looking north west across Edison Road. This is straight-on shot. You'll notice that the property is grounded by mature landscaping that's been in place and developed over a number of years. The site plan doesn't show any proposed modifications at this time. It is about half of an acre size, and there's a paved parking lot on site, which has about 15 spaces. The reason for this rezoning is that when it was originally rezoned, it was tied to a final site plan which limited the owner of the property to only a beauty salon. I believe at this time, they're looking to sell the property, and this will open up more uses. However, it's technically a downzoning, since we're going from a higher classification of local business, commercial district, to just an office buffer district. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
At this time, would the petitioner like to make a brief statement regarding the project, and then we'll take questions from council? Just please state your name and address.
Janice Hensel. I live at 2477 Lake Street in Niles. As he said, Snorer Properties owns the property at 3055 Edison Road. We purchased the property in 2005, after gaining the approval for the rezoning, and it was used as a beauty salon up until July of 2014. It has been for sale since April of 2014, and we've been unsuccessful in selling the property, even though it is priced well below our investment and at a very competitive market price. We have not even received one written offer. We have had several possibilities, and we've had several realtors, but the zoning was an issue for the other interested parties. So our realtor has suggested that we get the zoning changed to the office space to open up more possibilities for selling it. We have done improvements on it. We put the parking lot in. We added city sewer, hooked up with the city sewer, handicapped festival bathroom, hallways, different things like that. So we just, now we're asking for a favorable response from you to change the zoning so that we possibly... So we are a small company, and we have been having to make our mortgages for the last 18 months without a revenue coming in from there. So, thank you for your time.
Are there any questions from council for petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Is there one from the public wishing to speak?
project, and then we'll take questions from council? Just please state your name and address.
Janice Hensel. I live at twenty-four seventy-seven Lake Street in Niles. I am, as he said, Snorer Properties owns the property at thirty fifty-five Edison Road. We purchased the property in two thousand and five, after gaining the approval for the rezoning, and it was used as a beauty salon up until July of two thousand and fourteen. It has been for sale since April of two thousand and fourteen, and we've been unsuccessful in selling the property, even though it is priced well below our investment and at a very competitive market price. We have not even received one written offer. We have had several possibilities, and we've had several realtors, but the zoning was an issue for the other interested parties. So our realtor has suggested that we get the zoning changed to the office space to open up more possibilities for selling it. We have done improvements on it. We put the parking lot in, we added city sewer, hooked up in the city sewer, handicapped festival bathroom, hallways, different things like that. So we just, now we're asking for a favorable response from you to change the zoning so that we possibly... So we are a small company, and we have been having to make our mortgages for the last eighteen months without a revenue coming in from there, so thank you for your time.
Are there any questions from council for petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, back to the council?
I would like to make a motion that Bill seventy-two dash fifteen be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bill will go to the full council favorably. I will now ask the city clerk to read the title of bill number...
Bill eighty-one dash fifteen. The petitioner has requested that the bill be continued to the February eighth meeting and sent back to the South Bend in a session.
Do we need a motion here?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Would the clerk please read Bill eighty fifteen?
Eighty fifteen. Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described properties. First, east-west alley, north of California Avenue, between Sherman Avenue and the north-south alley.
Is there a committee report?
Yes. The Board of Public Works and Public Vacation met this afternoon and unanimous favorably.
Thank you so much. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Schuth. I'm the executive director at the Near Northwest Neighborhood Incorporated. Our address is ten oh seven Portage Avenue. I'm actually here on behalf of the Near Northwest Neighborhood, as well as three additional neighbors combined. The Near Northwest owns two vacant lots, and three additional homeowners own three homes adjacent to the alley that we're requesting to be vacated. The three homeowners actually approached the Near Northwest, requesting both the use of our vacant land, that we transfer that to them, but knowing that this alley was in the way. The alley is currently unpaved, neither with gravel or asphalt, and the neighbors are already using it for garden space. So we'd like to do this officially, and, and we seek your acceptance of this alley vacation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members?
There's a point of reference. You have filed the cross-access easement, is that correct?
Yes, thanks for asking. The Board of Public Works requested that we file the cross-easement, that cross-access easement, and all neighbors have agreed to this, and it was filed this morning. Actually, it will be recorded as soon as you approve this.
Thank you so much. No questions from the council, we will move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, none, back to the council?
With a favorable recommendation, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That bill will go forward favorably. I will now ask the city clerk to read Bill two sixteen.
Bill two sixteen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, establishing a non-reverting unsafe building fund. Number two nineteen. Transferring existing funds and amending Chapter Two, Article fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Is there a committee report?
Yes. The Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill zero-two dash sixteen. We send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
John Murphy, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor of this building. This bill, two sixteen, establishes an unsafe building fund, number two nineteen. Our legal department has been reading the unsafe building fund ordinance, and there is a requirement that a separate fund be established. For many years, the activities of this fund were accounted for in the general fund as a separate department, and a few years ago, they were set up in the Fund six hundred as a separate department. So the money has always been accounted for properly, but not in a separate fund. This isn't a request for an additional appropriation or a changing of fees or anything like that. It's merely to move the revenue and related expenditures from one fund to the other. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, back to the council?
Move for a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two sixteen will go to the full council favorably. I will now entertain a motion.
You may have a motion on both bill five dash sixteen as well as six dash sixteen to continue till the February eighth meeting and send them both back to the health department.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five sixteen and six sixteen will be continued. I will now entertain a motion to resolve from the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Full council is now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you give third reading to seventy-two fifteen, please?
Seventy-two fifteen. Third reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, and requesting a special exception for a property located at thirty fifty-five Edison Road, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move for passage of Bill seventy-two dash fifteen.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hordy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. Third reading to eighty fifteen, please.
Eighty fifteen. Am I actually gonna give eighty fifteen?
Eighty one, continue.
Oh, eighty, I'm sorry. Third reading on a bill to vacate the following described properties. First, east-west alley, north of California Avenue, between Sherman Avenue and the north-south alley.
Move for passage of Bill eighty dash fifteen.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hordy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. Zero-two sixteen, please.
Zero-two sixteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, establishing a non-reverting unsafe building fund, number two nineteen. Transferring existing funds and amending Chapter Two, Article fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Move for passage of Bill zero-two dash sixteen.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Dr. Barnum?
Aye.
President, Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hordy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolutions. This is portion of the common council meeting, where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the clerk. A report from the committee chairperson and standing committee, of which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation, is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exception, a report from the building department will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who's the formal present, given by the formal presentation from at the podium. If a proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from city community investment department will be given, followed by the petitioner. On all other proposed resolutions, formal presentations by petitioners are given immediately after the common, after the committee chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, council members are asked preliminary questions, and all council comments are being heard in the council portion only. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name and address and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they'll be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. For each member of the public is limited to five minutes. For those speaking in favor, first, followed by those in opposition with a five-minute rebuttal by the presenter of the bill. This time, Ms. Fowler, would you give reading to sixteen oh six, please?
Sixteen oh six. The resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designated a certain area within the city of South Bend, commonly known as six-seven-four-one, let's drive, South Bend, four-six-six-one-four, as a residentially distressed area for the purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for Jeffrey Selig and Amber O'Brien.
Sir, committee report?
Yes, community investment sends this forward with no recommendation due to a limited timeframe for a meeting earlier.
Okay, presenter?
Good evening, council members. Roxy, city of South Bend, fourteenth floor of this building. Before you is a residential tax abatement as read six-seven-four-one, let's drive, for Jeff and Amber O'Brien. They intend to build roughly about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar home. The total taxes to be created during the five-year period are eighty-nine hundred, roughly eighty-nine hundred dollars. The estimated taxes to be paid during that period are eighty-eight hundred, and the estimated taxes to be paid are roughly about a hundred dollars. I'm here to answer any questions, and I know that you guys also had a fair amount of questions about residential tax abatement in the community meeting, so I'm happy to answer those. The petitioner is also here and can speak on behalf of her project. Happy to answer the questions or have the petitioner speak in whatever, whatever order you prefer.
We'll have the petitioner speak. Would you come forward, give your name and address and a brief statement, and then we'll take questions for both afterwards.
Hello, thank you. My name is Amber O'Brien. Address is seven twenty-two South Gladstone Avenue. We are planning to build a new home in the immediate future in a subdivision called Lafayette Falls, which is on the south side of South Bend. It's a relatively newer subdivision, however, when the original property developer filed for bankruptcy in December of two thousand and fourteen, all of the remaining forty or so vacant lots went into bank ownership, where they have sat since then. There's been some decline in the actual development itself, as far as the homeowners' association goes. We have recently purchased one of those lots and are planning to build a house next month, actually, of roughly seventeen hundred and twenty-five square feet, which will have three bedrooms and two baths on a full basement, with the possibility of a fourth bedroom and third bath once finished, and it will also have a two-car garage.
Okay, thank you. This time, council members, any questions? Ms. White?
I would just like to thank you all for responding to my questions. It might be beneficial to share with the council, you know, what the question was and also the answer, and I'd like to thank our council attorney for weighing in as well.
Yes, so the question that was asked was the process, related to the process of residential tax abatement, and often it can be confused with the same process, because it's very similar for a commercial tax abatement. And so both, both code sections refer to the same spot in the Indiana code, which is why there's some confusion there. But as a property is then residential, it refers you to a secondary code, which essentially residential may not qualify under the commercial codes. Those four opportunities are the four bullet points given by the state, but then refers you to an additional four to five bullet points that, that will qualify under the residential. And so that is specific to why the resolution that council passes says this is, it identifies the specific residential lot, and then it also says that they're determining it to be a residentially distressed area very specifically, where in a commercial, for example, if it's located in a tip or redevelopment area, it's already been determined that that lot is, is facing conditions that, that prevent normal development. So I think that that was the concern that, that you had, and we are very specific in the resolutions, which we've worked with council attorney Kenny Kinsley-Ferrin, to make sure that that's pointed out.
If I could just add, also, question thirteen that the petitioner completed also spells out, the council works on each one of these on a case-by-case basis, and in light of Lafayette Falls and what situation has come across them is one of the reasons why it is appropriate to report, and why the recommendation, which was advisory to the council, was that it does meet all the criteria.
Vice President Davis?
So basically, if the lease situation had not occurred out there like that, then there's a possibility that that would not have been issued.
Correct. We would have, we would have looked at that in staff. One of the, one of the things, for example, in, in a lot of work with the council and the clerk's office that we've done over the last couple of years, for example, I'd point to you the triangle development up near Notre Dame. While it may qualify for the council to determine that it is a residentially distressed area and grant a parcel-by-parcel abatement in that area, through discussions and through concerns, we've identified that area where we wouldn't take tax abatements. And so, yes, exactly what you're saying, Mr. Davis, is we've looked at the site, we actually went down there, we know that it's a bank, you know, that it was in bankruptcy. There's about twenty-five to thirty lots. Middle-class housing is, is one of the things that we're searching for, which is the tendency in that particular neighborhood. So that's why we're trying to encourage it, that's why the recommendation came forward. In other instances, for example, we turn them down if we know they're in specific areas. For example, the council has already even voiced that, you know, we, we're not looking to, in, in, you know, continue to, I guess, incentivize development in an area, because now it's not residentially distressed.
Just in all fairness from that standpoint, is there, once we do that, is there a grouping? So if one person's not feeling like this thing right here versus somebody else there, how do we?
We, we keep track of that pretty, we, we keep track of that as to where those, those are, and then also, we, we coordinate with the, with the county auditor, who also tracks, to verify, you know, for example, I would use that instance on Notre Dame Avenue, where at, at St. Peter's, where first, it was very residentially distressed. It's begun to be built up, and so, for example, we know there's really no remaining lots along Notre Dame Avenue, maybe one that might come forward, and that's about it, where we would continue to grant, just to keep, to keep standard with what's been done in the past, but we're not looking to specifically expand that, because the rest of it is, you know, not residentially distressed anymore. Now it's actually sought after. So then, as you make the turn on St. Peter, there's still, there's still a lot of distress there. Obviously, we've, we've approved a few, but we continue to monitor those areas, and we advise on, on how appropriate it is.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Austin?
Can you tell me, you said that sometimes these, okay, if a residential parcel doesn't qualify under the commercials, they may qualify under four bullet points. I keep hearing the four bullet points. Can you tell me what are those four points in a resident, that, whereas by a residential may qualify?
I, I'll send them to you. They're, they're all quite long and lengthy. They have additional condent, conditions, like friend B, C, A, B, C, D for each one of the bullet points, so it's probably best if I, if I try to repeat all of them.
Okay.
Like try to...
When I look, I looked at, is this under Indiana code?
Yeah.
And when I looked at it, it didn't look really long, but there were things, tell me if I might have been in the right place, because my phone died, so I can't, I don't have my notes, unfortunately. And we're just having technology issues tonight. But there was something about the number of vacant homes. Is this, is this sounding like a, like a number of vacant homes?
Right off the top, I added six-one, or six-point-one, dash twelve-point-one, and then there's, I think, about, then there's probably twelve different sections specific to, to tax abatement, specifically there, and then it refers you in multiple points to another section, which is residential, which has probably additional conditions, but then actually gives you the four bullet points and has three to four perends for each. So to try to repeat that, I, I would be doing an injustice to the Indiana code section. Under the local municipal code, it would be two-point-seven-seven dash one, I believe. Yeah, which, which speaks to the, the residential code section, the local ordinance or local law passed by the council, which references back to those sections.
Right. You, when you said those four bullet points, that's about what I saw when I looked it up. And I, I'm asking that because when I was just looking at this, and I, I get to play the new-person card for a little while, maybe, but, you know, I, I was curious about the language of residentially distressed. So I too drove down there, and honestly, I was like, wow, this place is beautiful.
Sure.
And so I think it's really important, as we move forward as a council, I was, I was glad to hear, after communicating with some of my colleagues and different departments that, you know, that, you know, I heard some of, well, you know, we, we kind of all have done this in the past, so we continue to do it, and there's this issue of, well, some, one person got it, but another person doesn't get it. And I just want to keep in mind that, you know, just because we did it in the past doesn't mean we have to do it in the future. I heard you kind of saying that now tonight, which is, which I appreciate that, because I think this is one of the opportunities that we have, to begin to evaluate the policy that we're, we're giving. we're giving for benefit to all. I was very confused when I first drove there. I was like, how can you consider this area residentially distressed? And I think that that might be the same feeling for people who maybe aren't privy to these different codes and experiences that we have. So I think this is an opportunity for us to think about as we move forward in thinking about abatements, whether it's a commercial or residential. How can we get more information to the public? Again, I keep hearing people say, we want transparency, we want information, we want education, because one of my big concerns was, well, I know some residentially distressed areas, you know what I'm saying? And so my question is, you know, well, if people can get abatements for building, do we know about those? Are we accessing those? Are we offering those to everyone? You know, particularly, of course, in my district, a lot of the different things that's going on, so I know that folks there are really concerned, and there would be a great opportunity to incentivize people improving on their homes. I heard that there might be something out there, but then I also heard there's not four, you know, and this isn't the time that I should go over it, but I just wanted to take the moment to say, let's make sure, whether it's community investment or if it's the city or the council, that we're getting this kind of, it's a wonderful opportunity. Ms. O'Brien, congratulations, and I want to make sure that we extend those opportunities to everybody in the city.
Any other questions? Dr. Warner?
This question probably can't be answered tonight, but I'd like to be matter of record. The industrial or the commercial abatements that we talk about rarely exceed about, no matter how you calculate it, from three to fif, rarely exceed about 50%. At some point in time, in the 10-year period or three-year period or five-year period for which it's granted, usually about 50% of the assessed property taxes are actually paid. So in the sense of the abatement, it's a 50% reduction. And this is probably the first time, I believe, I've heard that it amounts to about 100%.
Correct.
Circumstances being what they are, my question, which would probably go to Kathy, would be, are we allowed to modify in any way, shape, or form the residential abatement, or is it so written in stone? In other words, could we limit the abatement to 50% of the total over the life of the abatement?
Not unless the city code was changed.
But there's a means by which that...
There's a discussion with the administration on that also.
Because I don't believe anyone ever really, I know it's a complicated formula, but I don't believe everyone ever intended that it would be 100% abatement over a five-year period. And so if there's a way to look at that going forward, I think that's probably something that should be looked at, but Ms. O'Brien, you got it. Good for you. We had a lot of other people looking for...
We have a lot of, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'd like to comment on that if you want me.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Typically, there's kind of a sweet spot on the residential abatements. Because it's the 75, it's roughly, it's 74, 880 that will abate in assessed value. So depending on the assessed, what amount you spend really determines, a lot of the abatements are capped at about $1,800 of the total taxes, because once you start exceeding that $250,000 cost of a building on a lot, it no longer, it no longer becomes valuable for that increased assessed value, where in this instance, because they're underneath, it's really a balancing act, because they kept that assessed value low enough, you know, they actually, that additional deduction essentially abates everything. And so, but to your point, yes, I mean, first movers are always the ones you want to incentivize, and then those that trail get less, and so I don't think that's a bad point.
To the extent it can be looked at, I think that'd be a good idea to look at.
Any other questions from council right now? No, seeing none will open up to the public. Those wishing to speak in favor of 1606, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1606, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Move to the adoption of 1606.
Six.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler?
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Boardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. We'll go to unfinished business. Bill, 1603, please.
Uh, councilmember...
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, just for the record, there were no first readings, as Mr. Burley left off the agenda.
True. Okay, no first readings for everybody out in the public. We'll go to unfinished business, please. So 1603?
It is appropriate to hear 1603 and 1604 to set both of these bills for a public hearing at the February 8th common council meeting and to send both of them to the Southern and Southern Committee for review and confirmation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there anything else under unfinished business?
Yes, President Scott, thank you very much. If I may, I would like to, in light of the public input that we heard at today's park committee meeting, and in light of the fact that the special parks board meeting actually happens after our February 8th meeting, I'd like to move that we postpone again the second reading of the bill regarding Elbel.
And that bill is 01-16.
That's right. Thank you, 01-16. And we again postpone it to our February 25th.
Second.
That makes sense. All in favor?
Please. The 22nd. Thank you.
So the motion is to February 22nd for bill 0116?
Yes.
Motion was seconded?
Second.
Yeah, seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the bill regarding Elbel is set to February 22nd.
And just to clarify, for the venue of the public, originally it was set for February 8th. This negates that motion and sets it over to February 22nd.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under unfinished business? Seeing none, anything under new business? Um, no? Mr. Davis? Okay, this time we'll turn to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor, this is the period where individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and address and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The max time limit for this portion of the meeting is a total of 30 minutes. So three minutes divided by 30 is 10 whole people at the max. Individuals may address only issues which are, have the city's jurisdiction. Individuals shall not be permitted to address any topic which the council has heard previously on the agenda. As council president, I may assign topics raised to individuals during privilege of the floor to appropriate council members, and request city clerk to contact members of administration to review and comment. All topics assigned shall be responded in regular common council meeting. At this time, I'll ask Gavin Furley to keep time, and you'll have three minutes, and he will give you an exit warning. You're good.
Jesse Davis, P.O. lots 10205, South Bend, Indiana. First thing I wanted to ask the council, I came up and discussed many times about city vehicles being used on personal times, such as street department vehicles, sewer department trucks. I thought basically that they were only allowed to use those for business purposes and not to run around. While I was out this weekend taking some photos at beautiful Elbel Park, I noticed one of our city street department trucks, number 205, which has been seen several times at a local bar hangout, and this time he happened to be at the resident of the bar owner, where last year I got several messages that city crews were there removing trees, putting up privacy fences for this person. Unfortunately, nobody got pictures of these city trucks and workers doing the physical work, but there's no reason that this city truck should be leaving South Bend and heading clear up near the state line to party at Mr. Mulligan's house. So I'll give you the photos, and I'd like you to look into that. Also, I would like you to check and find out how many investigations have been levied against the city and their departments in the last two years. I've tried to go to the legal department and get information, I've tried to pull FOIAs, and I keep getting run around. So I'd like to know how many legal investigations have been launched or levied against the city in the last two years, whether they're federal, local, or state, and how many of those investigations are still in fact ongoing. And then the third thing I wanted to ask you was to look into whether or not there was any major accidents on a job site of demolition, somewhere's on or about September the 1st in the city's South Bend near Lake Street, on a house that was being demolished, and if in fact the city is now being sued by the two contractors who got injured on that job. If they are in fact suing the city, is that company still getting contract work while they're in litigation with the city to do more demolitions?
Okay, thank you.
Jason Bedicki, Chrislow, 3822 West Ford Street, South Bend, Indiana. You know, already into a new year, it's kind of early to start talking budgets and then start talking funding, but as I already see in the paper, the proposal for a new restaurant tax to help fund the zoo while we're at the same time talking about selling Elbel, it kind of bothers me. You know, we know the gas tax is getting ready to go up to help fund the roads, we know part of that proposal will be to help raise the oil tax, which I know in this county will happen. We need the money, the roads need to be repaired, it's inevitable. But at some point, we have to count on people to say, when do we stop taxing everybody in this city to the breaking point? When do we say enough's enough, and if the zoo is something that people truly want and they truly enjoy, that they need to go out and spend the money at the zoo? The zoo needs to come up with some creative methods and some other ways of funding themselves, not counting on a special tax just for the zoo, which inevitably be raised to start funding other things. If we absolutely positively need this food and beverage tax, then let's not start with a special tax for one particular zoo. Let's not do the quarter of 1%. Let's invest full-heartedly in it and do the full 1% we're able to at least save Elbel Golf Course, save the park, and come up with a real, true plan for how to spend these tax dollars, because we know, the general public's smart enough to know, one quarter of 1% is not where that starts. That's where it starts. So before we approve this new tax, let's make sure it's not a special tax for one person, but let's make sure it's part of a plan to keep the city funded, to keep all of our parks and recreation facilities available, because we can't just say the zoo is special and then at the same time sell 25% of our parkland and Elbel Golf Course and take away one of our two only full left 18-hole golf courses. So I challenge you guys going forward to make sure that if this tax goes forward, that it becomes part of a bigger plan and not just a special tax.
Okay, thank you. Next. Name and address.
My name's Paul Blashko, 322 East Colfax Avenue, apartment 209, South Bend, Indiana, 46617. So I'm here representing the group Elbel for everyone. Several of the people in our group weren't able to attend the park committee meeting earlier tonight, so I was just wondering if they would be able to raise their hands just to show that they're here? No, thank you. So I just wanted to recognize those folks and their participation in the process. And finally, I just want to encourage the members of the council to continue to listen to the voices that are just starting to be heard. The residents of this city have a vision, and it's a vision that includes investing in our parks and our natural spaces, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Name and address.
Jerry Niskowski, 1113 North Elliott. First, I want to welcome the new members to the council. Nice to see some fresh new faces. Welcome back to the returning members. Although I feel like I'm in a tiddling work. You know, I mean, Boardy and Broden, these names. In all seriousness, though, welcome back. I would like to echo some of the comments that gentlemen just made about, the other two gentlemen just made about Elbel Park. I hope that when the time comes that we work out a deal to keep it, a golf course. Whether we keep it or whether we sell it, I hope that it remains a golf course in perpet, I can't even say the word, perpetuity, I mean, I can't even say it. But anyway, my biggest concern is that, for those of you who don't know, back when they first did that, South Bend Country Club wanted to swap with them. They recognized what a beautiful layout it was, what a beautiful course it was. And moving forward, granted, I know that we've lost some revenues, things were down supposedly across the country, but I'd like to see some comparisons, and maybe I'll have to do some research, compare it with other municipalities. But I think back to before Mr. Berlin came to what is now South Bend Cubs. When it was the Silverhawks, he did a great job of marketing, and even then, they kicked butt. They did marketing. So maybe we need to figure out marketing, because I guarantee you, you still see cars in Elbel's parking lot from Illinois and Michigan. For those of you who are not golfers, maybe, you know, this is just like going through one ear and one out the other in some sense, but the fact is, it is one of the premier municipal golf courses in this area. I don't want to see it sold to developers to build houses, destroy the wetlands. The development that's already happened out in that area has lowered the water levels in some of those wetlands already, so we don't need more development, especially right next to it. So I hope as this theme progresses, as talks progress, we're able to work it out to keep it, whether it be the city, let's market it and go a couple of years, see what happens, or if we sell it, that we have, the fact is that it remains a golf course. Excellent. I'm all done. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, name and address, please.
My name is Catherine Osborne. I live at 517 River Avenue, South Bend. I'm a relative newcomer to the city. I've lived here for about 18 months, and I want to share some thoughts on Elbel, as you might be able to guess by my sticker. From the perspective of a relative newcomer, I lived for 11 years in New York City before I came here, and I have a lot of friends in Chicago, and whenever I say to them something like, hey, I'm about to move to South Bend, they look at me with a look of pity and wonder, and I say, no, South Bend is actually, it's pretty cool. And one of the things that I always mention after the cheap rent is the investment that I can see that the city has made in green spaces and in parks over the last period of time. The river is amazing, the Riverwalk, you know, there are all sorts of parts of the city that are very exciting to me right now, and I would hate to see Elbel go. In fact, if anything, I think it could be made more attractive to people who might want to move to South Bend by doing things like extending the bike path out there, just making it more accessible to members of the city that don't necessarily drive, that don't live up there. People from the city could use it, even though it's outside the city limits. And I think we would look foolish to generations coming if, as one of the gentlemen said in the meeting earlier, if we sell it for what basically, again, I'm coming from New York City, amounts to not very much money. It's priceless land. There's no take backs. We can't get rid of this for $750,000 and then in 10 years say, gee, we would really like to have 300 acres of parkland. It doesn't work like that. So I think the time to say, let's stop the sale and form a commission is right now and figure out what to do with it next, but there's no take backs. Thanks.
Thank you. Next. Name and address.
May I ask a question before I give my name and address? Jennifer Betts, 511 South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I actually had a woman submit her name and address. She's in cancer treatment and couldn't be here today, and I don't know if I can read what she asked me to remark on. I may do that. Okay, her name is Connie Tully. She lives at 514 West LaSalle Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I can't make the hearings but want my voice heard. I had recent surgery related to the breast cancer that I had six years ago, and I have oncology occupational therapy at 2:00 p.m. today, which takes two hours and takes the stuffing out of me. Quote, "I no way can go and sit at a meeting after one of those. Can you speak for me? I did sign the petition and have been following the news. I definitely want the powers that be to hear our pleas and give the citizens a say and a chance to come up with viable alternative plans. We need to save what we have, take care of what we have, and acquire more parks and green space, not sell a botanical and environmental gem such as this. They owe us that much, and this my way or the highway attitude has demolished too many things of value in this town." Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please submit that to the clerk's office in the public record?
Yes, I wrote all over the paper, but I'll be there.
That's all right.
And just with my remaining time, I would just really, I'm very grateful that you all heard us today. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for delaying the vote at least until after the public hearings or the second hearing, but again, we ask for a commission to be formed. There are so many questions. I'm sure in the 34-page document that we submitted, you saw around five or six pages of just questions that we have that haven't been answered. I would also encourage you all to go out and visit Elbel. I don't know how much of you have gotten to spend time out there, but in the coming weeks, please just go take a walk and see how beautiful that it is. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Don't be shy.
Hi. My name is Rebecca O'Neil, and I live at 518 South State Joseph Street. I am also a recent resident. I graduated from St. Mary's this past spring, and... I graduated from St. Mary's this past spring, and since then have moved into a community of like-minded individuals, which I'm really glad that their voice is able to be heard today. My senior year at St. Mary's cross-campus at Notre Dame, I directed a nonprofit that actually worked with urban youth, getting them engaged in the outdoors called Triple C, since we're climbing campaigning cameras. And I just like, once again, want to echo that, like, the urban youth and like, benefits for them should not be pitted against in any way, like, the outdoors, because I think that they really can go like hand-in-hand with one another. And I think that that also reflects a White House initiative that's getting fourth graders out to parks, to federally funded parks that are going on right now. So I just wanted to speak for the youth and speak for millennials who are sticking around South Bend in appreciation for the green space and allow us to keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Charles Smith. I live at 2023 South Taylor Street here in South Bend. I'm not here to address anything about Elbel or anything that I spoke upon last time when I was here. I'm on a whole different subject. It's a new year, and I've been spending time speaking with people that work for the city, from the directors of various departments, also people all over the country, but what I'm here today for is, I'm to speak on behalf of the animal community within South Bend, which honestly, you guys don't have the time to hear everybody talk about this. So I'm here to speak for them. I'm here today to address to the city that the animal welfare does have an impact on the community, whether it's neglect, abuse, or even to the extent and level which is dogfighting. With all this comes with a lot more problems. I'm not here to address the problems or the solutions today. I'm here as an intro to let the council and the city to know we have the animal community's support and the backing. The animal community is doing more than just talking, but we are making things happen. From blanket projects, bed projects, volunteering to walk the dogs at the shelters, give one-on-one time to the dogs, doing volunteer photography as well to help the adoption rates. Another group, South Bend Lost and Found Feds, is helping by keeping lost dogs out of the shelters, which saves taxpayers' money, and they're doing a magnificent job on it. P.A.L., which is Pet Assistant League, which helps with vet cross, food, and helping families in need. And then you have PIPPLE South Bend, which has helped bring the change, a brief specific legislation, along with helping the city officials make new ordinance, which is actually one of the best things the city has done for the animal welfare. PIPPLE South Bend continues to help as a community with education, as well as getting the community to get up and move. Three things Mayor Pete asked for from the community as expectations, as we had expectations for him. Unfortunately, Mayor Pete did not take my invite to come here today. He did not respond to my email. First is involvement, which the animal community is doing and it shows. Secondly, resources. The animal community is doing that by pulling together its resources. And third and most important, the city needs unity. The animal community stands united, not just here, but throughout the nation. If the city can say there is no issues or needs to the animal community, then I want to be here. We are here to let the city know we do care. Everyone, the same from the city. Same from the city, we are not here to make a better, we are here to make a better and safer animal community, but to make a better, safer community for the city as a whole. With community involvement, I ask not to let the impacts be a smaller fun into South Bend animal care and control, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Senator, is there a motion? Some of them adjourned. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good night, everybody.